So in the hierarchy of order, the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is having a meeting on November 6th, 8:00 PM at 6:30 PM in the Mount Pleasant High School. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public but is not a meeting outside of public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct by new business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at previous meetings but presented to the board for discussion. At this time, please turn on the cell phone and stand by.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm going to read our indigenous land and knowledge. Mount Pleasant Public School is honored to the indigenous people whose traditional land we are gathered on to take. To recognize the indigenous people on their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation and a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since they were born and whose land on which the Saginaw tribe and Indian tribe have resided and have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the long-standing history of this land and to seek to understand the outcomes within that history. Local?
Tim Weller here.
Can you pay up here?
Can you read here? Can you bounce here?
Here we got you. We have to move our hands.
I can move if you move the other.
Second, hold in paper.
Alright.
And your pose. Thank you.
I'm going to start without super tonight.
Good evening, everyone. The first thing on my report this evening is an update from Mount Pleasant Middle School. With us tonight is Sergeant New York, Principal of Mount Pleasant Middle School. Hello. See, we are going to start with a little activity. Our first thing, we have been working really hard on capturing kids' hearts and I know that you've probably heard a bit about it, but one of the main pieces that each one of our classrooms or each one of our hours do is called "Good Things." It's a really positive way to start each session or each hour that we are in with our students, but also we use it at staff meetings or any types of meetings that we have. So we're going to start with "Good Things" and we're just looking for a few people to share what are some good things that are happening kind of in your life or in school or in really anything that you would like to share. So who has at least one good thing to go ahead and share?
I'll share. I'll share something.
Katie, what do you have?
So we had a new transmission to dinner man. We didn't have it for a month and then today he said it's not the transmission, it's a little plug and we fixed it and you know how we think so that was very great.
That's awesome.
That is very good. And a good school thing is I really loved the family engagement event that the middle school did recently. I thought it was a great alternative to conferences and it was really fun and I realized how much the kids walk because I'm walking from class to class. It's expensive, but I thought I would put in a lot of effort and it was very nice and I hope they continue it, but that was a good thing I just saw from the district.
Thank you. Who has another good thing?
I got a mountain of leaves in my yard out of my yard.
And hopefully the wind doesn't blow them.
Don't curse me.
We know that works with families.
Yeah.
So who has another good thing?
I'd say we had a lot of student successes we've been able to celebrate. We look specifically at Mount Pleasant High School's success with athletics. Congratulations for all and saw all conference, right? Admiral mentioned. Yeah, good job with that. Our football team had a lot of success, volleyball team had a lot of success and our band is continuing a very successful season. So it's great to see our students excelling outside of the classroom.
Good, thank you. How about one more good thing?
I'll say one. I've heard today someone telling me that the middle school pickup group is working great.
That is a good thing. Thank you for that. Okay, so we are going to talk about capturing kids' hearts, that was just kind of an opener start. Also, I'm going to do some perception survey data from our student surveys, also some of our behavior data and then we're also working with Jim Harris for some MTSS homework work as well. So a lot of good things happening in the middle school and I'm just going to share a variety of those. So first of all, with capturing kids' hearts, we have really embraced that professional development and we are working hard on implementing capturing kids' hearts consistently throughout the building. We, our PD day last week or the week before, we did a lot of staff actually presenting how they're using capturing kids' hearts in the classrooms. And it was probably one of the best PD days that I think our staff has had in quite a while, a good one in quite a while, because it was all staff sharing their ideas and how it comes into work. And everybody's kind of at different places. We use a self-assessment and so this just kind of gave them more ideas, but also how to just continue to do things better or different or more effectively in their classroom. So I just kind of listed some things that we are really working hard on. "Good Things" was one, but also greeting every student as they enter the classroom and intentionally doing that. And some of them are doing it with handshakes, some are doing it fist bumps, some of them are doing it with like air hugs, you know, a lot of variety of greetings that we're doing with students. But it's really mostly for just making that one-on-one connection and using their name as well and having an intentional connection to starting our work. A lot of relationship building activities, social contracts should be in all of the classrooms and that's a picture of just the sixth grade blue team there. There's, they use it on some digital pieces too, so I put that one up there. But a lot of them are just hand written with student signatures on them as well. We have our consistent discipline model, or ladder we call it, that is used consistently across the building for those when the students are not following the social contract, the specific steps that are taken. And we're really working hard now on empowering the staff and students within the process so that the students are taking, you know, some of them are greeting or some of them are running the "good things" within the classroom, so empowering. And we have self-assessments for the staff and we also have tomorrow, actually in our PD day, we're going to do another self-assessment for capturing kids' heart for our building data so we can really look at that and see where we are based on our needs for that. And we also have our capturing kids' heart presenter or kind of our head person, Joe, and he's coming to visit at PMS on Thursday. He's going to visit three different classrooms from our Process Champions, which is a group of, I think I have about seven or eight Process Champions in the middle school. So he's going to visit three of them on Thursday morning. So hopefully we'll have some good feedback from that as well. So we really, we really have loved it. It's really, it's gotten us back to a really nice focus and relationship with our students and I think that the next few things that I speak to will, I think that capturing kids' heart has played a big role in some of this data as well. So we can click on that data document, but you guys have one in front of you and it looks like this. And the top page, the board received last year, so I'm just, I know there's some of you who aren't new, so I'm going to just review that quickly. This is last year's student perception data. And you can see on the side, those are the questions that are asked and then you first have the agree and the disagree, which are just like the number of students and then you have a raw percentage next to it, agree and disagree. So that's last year's data and you can go ahead and flip to the next one or click my tab at the bottom there. And this one is this year's student perception data. And you can see that in the agree column, all of them are agreeing except for two areas. And so in all of the areas, we went up or we got better in all of the areas. And some of the areas were like up to like nine percent that we got better in. So I was really happy to see that. And the one area that is, the first red one, I feel my school has high standards for achievement, that was like sixty-six percent and thirty-three and last year it was sixty-four and thirty-five. So it's not like it's completely upside down or anything, but it's staying kind of the same. And the same down from the bottom with the first experience determination part as well. Those two are main areas that did not get better, but the rest of them did, did get better overall, which I think we were really happy with. We're going to look at it tomorrow as a staff as well. But, and on the last page, you will see that's where it becomes our kind of current action plan where you can see I highlight, like these are green, which are our good areas, which are kind of in the eighty to ninety percent. And then my yellows are roughly those who are in the seventies and then sixties and below are my reds that we need to work on. So I do think that capturing kids' hearts has been a piece of this as well, especially with the relationships, students liking school, students feeling like they have connections. And so this is one definite piece of data that I think is really showing some great areas happening in the middle school and some things that we're continuing to work on. So back at my presentation, some additional things or data that they, they answered, like actually typed in and some things about what they like about school and all of these things I think are always kind of interesting with friends, there's different classes they like, lunch, learning teachers, but then things they dislike, loud and annoying students, phone rule, work rules, homework, everything, and short weekends and wake up early. So nothing glaring in the dislike other than just normal, normal life, the school dates. So I thought that was good to point that out as well. Sense of belonging is one thing we've also been working on and one of the questions, like what helps them, you know, or helps them feel or have a sense of belonging. All of those things were very positive in there as well. We had friends, sports, lunch, teachers, class, advisory, art club, drama class, the people around me, the American real and learning in general. This was an area of "Do you feel safe?" And in all of our areas, on the top is last year's "Do you feel safe?" And on the bottom is this year's. And those, all the areas that always, I think it was all of the, sometimes or whatever, they decreased and all of the areas we got better in for the safety part. So all the numbers are off those numbers now. We'll give you that for a moment. And then some other open-ended questions were what clubs would they be interested in? You can see all of those there and also connected to our DEI work or what types of things you would like to see celebrated or honored or holidays and like hot dog day, bacon day, wood day. But a lot of that information is things we are looking at and really listening to the course of students. Alright, so after the student perception data, then we really have been focusing hard as well on our behavior data, which I presented before in the past and done a lot more detailed behavior data, but just the only thing we're going to look at right now is just the totals because our, our goal really is to decrease the total of the behaviors for else and the boosts, whichever way you want to call it. You can see October is one of the tougher months and we were really working hard on October and it did go down as you can see from three hundred and thirty-eight to two hundred and seven and we were pretty happy with that number. And you can also see that our cell phone numbers on the bottom. In October, we had fifty-five students who received boosts for cell phones and so if you actually take fifty-five off of two hundred and seven, that number is pretty darn good for the cell phones. So same with September, same with August as you can see. But we have been working really hard over the years to really get behaviors to be managed even better. So I think that shows. Then last, we are working with Jim Harris for some of our MTSS work and Jim Harris, we worked with Shane Brooks from the RAC as well. And they did a few things with the middle school. The first thing is they did a listening circle where all of the staff had an opportunity to come in and meet with Jim and Shane and they had some focus questions that they asked and they put together kind of some data from that. And then we did the actual TFI, which is the Tier Fidelity Inventory and that's really a more concrete on our actual MTSS process. And with the listening circle, Jim's glow, which are some great things that we are doing, is our positive reinforcement system, our Euler drops. And we really worked hard on that because one of the perception data's questions our students are frequently recognized for good behavior and we felt that that number was not as good as it should be last year with us doing Euler drops, but we also realized we needed to do something different with it. Now we have a monthly menu. Our students have some choice in where the Euler drops are going and they really have, we do an Euler drop poll one time every month and the kids just, they really love it. I think we probably acknowledge a hundred and fifty, two hundred kids up that day. Ms. Russell, one of our counselors, she runs it and she works super hard to make that happen and I appreciate all of her work with them too. So that was something that was really nice for Kim to, the staff, but also we had to notice the Euler drops. Our cell phone policy has gone over great. It has made our climate completely different and I think that could also play a role in a variety of these pieces too. Also, the internal perceptions versus external at PMS. He felt like over ninety percent of the staff that were in this listening circle were very positive and really enjoyed their roles at PMS and it frustrates them as a staff that the external or the community does not see how amazing PMS is. And I think we would all probably agree that a lot of people have thoughts on the middle school, maybe from the past, and that overall, if you ask a staff member who comes there every day and works, it's a pretty great place to be. And that kind of frustrated Jim because he, he wants the perception to be as good as it is. So it was really interesting for him to kind of pick up on that as well. Again, we've asked like what suggestions are there, but something we're going to continue to work on. So with the listening circle, the other things or the growths that we need to work on, communication was one. We're coming up with a specific plan on how we communicate directly with the teachers if there's a discipline situation, because as we know, there's some things we can share, some things we can't. So we really want to just label, if this is something that happens, this is what you will receive from us and then type it in there. Also, we have a discipline model that we're using consistently for in the classroom, but then we're also working on what does that model look like when a student is sent out of the class? So what they can expect from that. Our elected teachers don't have team prep, our other teachers do. So how can we work on getting the time for the elected teachers to really work with its new teachers to do a class for students? The other thing that he noticed was it's been a while probably since we've actually, all of our teachers and staff have just had some professional development on what a middle schooler is like, you know, brain-wise and maturity-wise and all that. He thought it would just be really good for us to do some reminders on middle school development. And then also our common areas of just working on how do we address a student running down the hall with common language? So all things that we feel like, a couple of them, we will definitely be able to hash out during the next couple of weeks through our success team or our school improvement team. The TFI, which is the overall percentages are over there on the right with our tier one, two and three, where we fell with our initial baseline. And some things we're working on with that are consistent behavior plans and process, professional development for all so that everybody's on the same page, including those new teachers. How do we do that? All of us reviewing the TFI data and then continuing our current behavior process, which we've already started this year, push consistently as we move on. Those numbers, we were really happy with actually and we don't see any reason why those numbers will increase soon. So. Great things happening at PMS. Again, things continuing. We have a great student council this year, publications. We had our fall festival last week and we did an amazing Monopoly community building activity throughout the whole building, had great spirit volunteers in, great donations. It was really fun for everyone. This is kind of charities month, we've got some DEI work as well, our shirt day. We've got some clubs going on, chess, D and D, art club, esports just got started a couple of weeks ago and then we actually just started this boiler hour, which are our academic and personal to create. So nothing really new in there, but just more great things happening as we continue to move forward. So what questions do you have?
It's wonderful to see all the works of Nikki W. B. I particularly appreciated how transparent you are with the data that we took perception survey and to see the progress that you made, we all know that things still go up matching and some of them are huge, jumping up in areas that are typically hard. Like I feel like my voice is hurt. I mean, there's a lot of areas where there's significant growth. So I hope that, you know, your, your staff and everyone's probably good work. It's exciting to see and witness this little new growth. I wondered, so you talked just a little bit about Process Champions. And so those, the teachers in the building that have taken an extra PD and then are following, like how does that work for them?
Yep, we were able to, all of the buildings were able to choose a team of teachers to continue additional training through the stage. And so we had one session that we met with the Joel Colorito and then hopefully that will be able to continue with the Process Champions. And the goal is to empower them to come back and be kind of helpers, also continue to train, share ideas and just really keep it alive. And I hope that we're able to have those Process Champions and all of us continue more professional development capturing kids' hearts. I do think we all, I think all of the movements have really enjoyed it. I would say that we have, it's just kind of brought us all back together for more consistency in common language that has really been helpful. I think that helps.
And that our teachers, you know, through that process as well? Maybe not as Process Champions, but to me.
Did you say the names of teachers? I actually, on my Classist Champions, I have a couple of new work, like one to two here. So they're doing a nice job coming in and then also leading as well.
I liked hearing about when you checked out the kids being greeted, how then students started doing that, doing the good things. I think that's just a great model, giving them that common ownership. So that was exciting to hear. And I think one thing, this is a larger conversation, one thing that just, you know, some in the bathrooms, right? This is always a thing. How do you feel safe in the bathrooms? How do you, that I know there's many challenges for that. And so I think helping across the board at buildings, you know, supervise time sometimes and I know that that's a challenge. So, you know, the staff is very creative and is constantly, I'm sure, adjusting. But I guess that's just an area I was thinking to the kids, you know, whatever it is. People horsing around or maybe work, you know, whatever, but I know that's a challenge for a lot of people. And so just would love to see that, you know, continue to improve on there. But I'd really like to hear you reach the data as well, just so that you can see, even on some of those period, there was issues that was not drastic change from before. So please express our thanks to, to the staff and your team and all the kind of work that they do.
I think that bathrooms are one of those things that we would, we've tried a variety of things, but we also have supervision at every single bathroom during the passing time. All of us do hallway sweeps and it's just a constant. We have hallway monitors as well. It is a constant, you know, let's go, let's go. And there's only three minutes and so it's a, it's a, it's a piece. We've also tried to not have students use the bathroom at passing time. We did that not last year, but maybe the year before and they only were using passes during the class time so that they could have it more structured. That there was just way too much time where students were out of the academic setting for that. So we have, we have tried a variety of things, but yes, we definitely need to continue to work on that.
And you're not alone in that.
Not what you need to. I mean, it's like a locker room person for a boy and a girl every single passing time. But they'll still be in there. But yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. Next on our report is a presentation from the Maguire team regarding fifth grade.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I have myself and then Caitlin Ballinger, fifth grade teacher, and Judy Baker, fifth grade teacher. And we're just going to go through a brief presentation about camp and our ideas for this year and then ask her any questions again. So we would like to go to Eagle Village this year. Last year, we went to Camp Hope and Conic, I hope I said that already. And this year, we would like to go to a new camp. And the reason we want to go to a new camp is we had during COVID, we were able to have people come to us. So we did have some money that was set aside for camp. So instead, we spent it on a camp coming to us. And that was kind of our first taste of being able to do fifth grade camp, but in a COVID-friendly way and bringing it to a water rather than going overnight elsewhere. So after that, the camp, it was a wonderful experience and we wanted to offer that for third and fourth grade on a smaller scale and did that through a grant from the Saginaw Shippuden Tribe for Eagle Village and it went over amazing. So we started to build relationships with Eagle Village and some of the programming and some of the counselors and had a really easy process bringing them back. So we've done that, I think this will be our third year or maybe fourth, I can't remember for sure. And knowing that they offer a campus overnight, we looked into a basket but weren't able to put together numbers fast enough in order to make that work. So we went with, we were able to get a number back on and get a quote and we knew we needed to make a decision on dates in the fall and we went with it. We really liked the experience that we had with Eagle Village and really liked that relationship. So we did look into it again after the spring last year, after we went to Camp Hope and Conic and pursued that and we were able to get a quote. So that is what we're wanting to do now. We really, our kids have just some of the team-building activities we were able to bring into the bathrooms in our third and fourth and the kids responded really well and we'd be excited to further that and they get closer, which was a benefit also. Eagle Village model is we believe in the potential of all people regardless of their story and they're well-versed in all of the aspects that we would experience at our school, whether it's students that don't want to participate or students that love to participate, students that have unique needs or students that have really basic needs, students that are going to be overzealous and students that you're going to have to draw in and try to get them to participate in part of the group. That's what Eagle Village specializes in and we did notice that through our experience when they were at Maguire. Why Eagle Village? We believe they have a powerful impact on our staff and students and their team and character building approach is exactly who we want to be as a school.
So our goals are more to, our goals at camp are for more than just getting the kids outside and having fun. We also want them to build character. We want them to have hands-on outdoor experiences and strengthen friendships for future support, especially as they're in their last few years of being from middle school when we go to camp. And we want them to make good memories with each other and have some camp fun. So facilities, there's a bath there and they have a lot of indoor and outdoor activities, including basketball climbing, hiking, canoeing, archery, high ropes and more. And the teachers get to choose the activities, which is really exciting. So we kind of take, they have a list, like a menu of options and then we kind of take the ones that we can learn from most. And the, last year we did some like chipper cooking, we did survival skills and it seems like Eagle Village, like we can do the high ropes course and they have just like a little bit more to offer. So for dining, very important. We'll definitely make sure kids are fed, of course, and they have a lot of variety of different options. Eggs, breakfast meat, potatoes, cereal or fruit. There's always fresh food, fresh fruit, coffee, hot tea, hot chocolate and ice water are always available. So nobody gets hungry at all. And lunch and dinner, kind of your still camp food, chicken tenders, pasta burgers. And of course, they make these special dietary restrictions.
On our sample schedule, the kids will be broken into separate groups. So then they all will experience everything just done at the same time. So we'll have multiple groups of above ten percent of kids that will travel from activity to activity. You can see that we've got three full days of activities with meals in between, snacks sometime for them to just kind of hang out and be kids, just to be outside. Okay, chaperones, we are going to target, last year we were able to do one to six. Six kids per chaperone. Our max would be one to ten. Chaperones, they, they were amazing. We couldn't do it without them. We've had about six males and sixteen males and yeah, it just, we couldn't have done without them. They will of course go through bumper requirements.
They will of course go through, um, your requirements and they follow the schedule with the students. They will sleep with the students. They will dine with the students. Um, so it is, uh, 24/7 for them, um, for the three days that we're there. And then, uh, Eagle Village is able to offer modern cabins that will house up to 136. We have approximately 100, um, fifth graders at Maguire. Add on to that approximately 16, uh, 12 to 16 chaperones. And then staff who would follow, they're definitely 36. The, um, they are in the same building, but separate wings. So it would be boys in one wing and girls in the other wing. Each cabin has two showers, two toilets, all of two sinks. Um, each unit within the complex would sleep about 15. And again, chaperones would be in the complex with the students. Um, they're less than 500 feet from everything else. So it's not like they're way off, um, and not accessible. So we could reach them if, uh, needed. And then the cost is, uh, three days and two nights is $185 per student. That is a little bit more than Camp Hope Conic, but a lot of the things that were itemized on Camp Hope Conic, like high ropes was extra. Um, there were quite a few things that you had to pay additional to, um, that we were not able to provide for the kids, um, are included in Eagle Village. So while that price looks like it's higher initially, we would have done everything at Camp Hope Conic that we are able to do here, the price would be comparable. Um, and then $85 per chaperone. All meals and snacks are included. Um, efforts that we would make to help reduce the expense to the families would be, we've applied for 2% grants. We've had PTO fundraisers, various other grants. We've applied for every little grant from, that has come our way and we have applied for. Um, and then also last year, I don't know if I can remember, but we were able to raise from donors and, and nonprofits, donors and sponsors.
I think.
About 80 students. Okay, we were able to send about 80, um, based on sponsoring donors. So we would like to bring the cost down to 50 to 75 dollars per family, um, which is what we were able to do last year. So I don't anticipate that we would have to rush through the funding, um, to do that again this year.
And then we just wanted to, um, really quick talk about transportation. This is our plan in case we had new transportation. We're currently checking with Eagle Village to see if they would offering. When we went to Camp Eight months ago, they did offer transportation and that sounds amazing. So I'm really hoping they offer it. Um, not that we don't want to use ours, but it sounds great to not have to worry about it. And maybe you bring your muffin over and you just get, um, sounds awesome. So we're still working on that with them. But we have 10 days there that would be the 29th through the 31st. Last year we went on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, not our best guess. Cause then we have teachers that work Thursday, Friday, and kids that come to school Thursday and Friday. So we picked it Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, this year I think those are the dates. And, um, it will work a lot better for our students and our staff. Um, so overall, we, it wasn't that we had a bad experience. We just love the idea of being able to get closer. We love the idea that we already have a relationship with them, that a lot of the things our students wanted to do last year, but were kind of off limits at Camp Hope Conic due to staffing or due to, it was an itemized cost that we didn't know enough about when we were having a book. And if we wanted to do it later, they didn't have the staff to add it later. So some of those things aren't barriers for us if we were to do this camp. So we wanted to open it up for any questions that you have. And then we would love for you to consider this camp for us this year. So do you have any questions for us?
No, it sounds like you did a lot of research. Thank you.
They have worked really hard to look into this for sure.
Like the idea of continuity and the fact that you have a relationship with them already and that you do some of the activities before, I think it makes very sense.
Thank you. I'm going to add your math company. So we are out of here. Thank you so much.
I will just add that we do have, uh, under an business approval of, um, this trip. So we don't have exact dates set, but I, I think probably what they're looking for is just, um, maybe that the board would approve and support this going to a new camp. And then once we get specific information regarding the exact dates and transportation, we sort of get the paperwork in and then the board can approve it again at that point because it's an upfront, I think.
Yes, and we didn't, we kind of looked to places when now tentatively because we, we were honest with at Camp Hope Conic and said, hey, we don't know what the decision is going to be. So if, then we would do these dates and said the same thing to Eagle Village. So we didn't want to prison either way and just pick both. Right now we told, oh, hey, one's going to be on the album. I want to know who is. But we set it a little nicer than that. Thank you very much.
The next item on our report is an update from the Sex Ed Advisory Board. Uh, from Team, is our board liaison to the S E.
So I am the current liaison. I started January or so. And, um, to the Sex Ed Advisory Board, um, there's been several conversations that came up that they are having conversations about. And they offered up a survey, which all of our community members, parents within the district have received. So there's a very large survey that went out during parent teacher conferences. Um, they're still gathering some of that information back to get that feedback. Um, of the questions that we actually all saw. They presented that survey to us four months ago or so. So I thought that I would, in my liaison role, bring, um, two things that are in conversation there, um, up with the board to have a discussion about what the board's feelings are on some of these things. We aren't making a decision. We're just joining the conversation to get some of our board feedback. So some of the concerns were like the survey, uh, we as board members, we didn't have a survey. So, and our thought was, well, we have other opportunities for that. So I wanted to kind of make this that opportunity. The other thing that I wanted to bring to attention is, um, they have to do a lot of work because they're looking at curriculums, they're looking at different components. Um, and so as they're talking, I'm hearing them say, well, we don't know which direction the board. So this could be a lot of work for us to do that if we have no idea where the board sits on anything. And so I thought it'd be helpful for us to kind of have a little discussion about two topics right now to help them better work, do the work that they're trying to do and help guide them in their process to create the recommendation. And I thought it was very valid on their part because they don't necessarily know where we stand on certain things. They understand their role as an advisory and that they do a recommendation to the board. And then the board has the ability to make the final decisions because it is our responsibility. The other thing I just wanted to mention is, um, the Sex Ed Advisory Board is controlled by state law. There's a lot of components to how it is structured. Um, but one of the conversations we have is one of the areas that is not controlled by law, but they want to have a better idea of how that interacts. So the two areas that I'd like to have some discussion on, just feelings in general, are about gender identity. And then the other one is about students' role on the Sex Ed Advisory Board and what kind of authority does a student have who sits on the Sex Ed Advisory Board. The state law is kind of vague in that space. Um, and so, um, the gender identity, really the conversation is, um, not specifically when and where and what the curriculum looks like. Um, they wanted some feedback on, um, do we want to have gender identity, identity conversations? Um, and potentially where that could fit, um, to try to give them some guidance. So our curriculars are kind of broken into the, I call it the high school space. So this is all the Sex Ed Advisory. So these are just that one course. So it's not the entire curriculum we're talking about, right? So it's the guidance that the Sex Ed Advisory Board does for our determination and how that incorporates within that curriculum component. So there's kind of a high school level, kind of a middle school level, and then just below the middle school. So that four, five, and then six space, seven, eight, and then high school. So there's the way the curriculums are kind of built, we kind of approve them in like three chunks, I would say. So one thing I wanted to open up first is having a conversation about gender identity. Um, and what, what did different board members thought about having gender identity as part of the conversation during that curriculum component, which is the Sex Ed Advisory Board's recommendation on curriculum. Currently in a lot of the space, we use a person called the Wonder Years. Um, so the Sex Ed Advisory Board's done a lot of work in this space. Um, they actually met with the, the, uh, curriculum author, I would call that. Um, many school districts in the state utilize this. We've used to utilize that for decades, for a very, very long time. And so, but they're looking at other ones also. There's other curriculum models that are out there that different people are recommending. Um, but again, they want to have some guidance, um, as they start to go in doing the nitty gritty work of looking at the curriculums, because that's a, that's a big step, right? And so they don't want to go working down the path and have us at the end say, no, that's not anything the board is interested in whatsoever. Or you went too far or they, try to give them some guidelines and guidance on what we would see. So does anyone have any thoughts about gender identity and the conversation about gender identity?
Just for clarification, are we talking about all three chunks or one in particular?
Well, we're in a conversation at this point. That's pretty specific. So eventually all three chunks will be talked about. Um, right now there's just that, how do I call it, the middle schools? Or just under the middle school space is kind of really, um, but they're all connected, right? So eventually all of these pieces will have a conversation. So, uh, specifically they're working in that space right now. But again, it all links, many of these curriculums are not just that one little thing. It's a curriculum over the whole space. And so again, um, and I couldn't even tell you the dates of the three year or four.
To kind of like work in curriculum, but their views through that.
Yeah, and there's, um, so the experts on, uh, what is being said in the curriculum space and then, um, to what age group, what is being said, that gets really nitty gritty. And that's what they're looking at. And that's more than we actually have the ability to talk about. So I was looking at more of a higher level. We want to have gender identity as part of our curriculum of the sex ed, of the sex education component of this district or now. Cause that does have an overreaching impact on, um, so how I, I understand it, uh, we can move when we have different pieces, but it's often challenging totally removing certain components of it the way all of the different pieces are built together. Does that make sense?
So what I'm hearing you say too is that you want paraphrases for the Sex Ed Advisory Board or whether we speak for curriculum that contains gender identity. Is that accurate?
Yeah. And, and again, we're not making a decision. Is this a conversation? Because, um, this is a, a longer term conversation and that is their role. But, um, I think giving them some feedback would be helpful as our point goes.
Yes, if we're spending all this time looking at curriculum and half don't let's say, that itself contains some don't. And we already know how we feel about, well, as we can tell, they give them the guidance, so they don't stand as much.
Right, so, so certain curriculums may just get knocked out for, uh, reason, right? For gender identity, so.
Does the current curriculum that are being used address some of this at each level? Or just in certain, I'm just trying to gather and receive, do you know that currently? Like what the current curriculum.
I am not an expert. And so that again, that's some of the work that the Sex Ed Advisory Board is working on to help, um, understand and create a recommendation based on talking to the curriculum people, talking to the state of Michigan, Sex Ed Advisory guidance, um, the health teachers. They are all part of this conversation to come to a consensus on that space.
So my initial thought is we're, we're kind of leaning this, is keeping it pretty high in that, um, I guess, thinking about it, I would not want to get too focused on any one part without caring about curriculum as a whole. And so thinking about it, I don't think we should initially rule out anything that isn't presented as, as a thing. So thinking along those lines, I don't, I don't think we should put primers on ruling out any curriculum if the Sex Ed Advisory Board is, is considering something one way or another. That which is maybe my initial thought, but I want more information on, on it as an entirety.
I do feel differently. Uh, I feel that especially with the look that we're taking at our current policies, that we have, we're starting work to really have an inclusive, um, district in all ways that we can. And I feel that our policies are pretty clear in the ones that we've adopted, uh, in having, letting our students have gender identity in the way that suits them. And I feel that discussions are taking that, it belongs in the Sex Ed Advisory, it belongs to the curriculum. Um, and I don't, I feel that it doesn't really matter what age. I think the curriculum writers are very conscious of brain development and do it in a way that is developmentally appropriate for this specific grade of, like, that what upgrades. Um, and I do feel that, um, recommending that to the Sex Ed Advisory Board that has, you know, and I know three others are listening tonight. So maybe that becomes a little more awkward of a conversation. Uh, but I feel that I would be in line with the policies that we're adopting and, um, things like, um, mission efficiency and stuff we have.
So again, this is kind of a beginning of a conversation. It's not the end of the conversation. So, um, can you give me any thoughts?
I feel like this is a sensitive and defensive issue with many feelings in people in the community have. And so I think for me, um, I agree with what you say is looking at curriculum as a whole because there could be a element we love about something and when we don't, you know, just hold off it together. But I know with that, um, parent survey that went out, I feel like that's an important piece just to listen to because I think it asked some specific questions, um, here of, um, I thought about, cause I have students that age, but I know they didn't change that from my understanding. It used to go up to all and then there was some discussion, you know, about, anyway.
Pretty much this survey went to families and children within the district.
Right.
And they were kind of like, what do you think is the most appropriate to have and what grade levels?
Yeah.
Kind of trying to go along with that.
Yeah, so I'd be interested in maybe if, I don't know if we have the results of that or if there's a deadline on it or, um, if we haven't got great responses or ways we could get more of a response. Because I think in a topic like this, it's sensitive, it can be divisive to, um, just listen to different stakeholders in it. And there's from many different, we're stakeholders, teachers, parents, students that's maybe, um, I think that would be an important piece as we're having this discussion as well. Um, but I don't know, kind of, you know, do you happen to know the status of kind of where that survey? Like, is there a deadline? Like, I, you know.
Cause I'm there at first. Um, right now we have 267 responses and I do think they wanted to wrap it up. I know we have a meeting coming up soon, so I'm sure that we're about at the point where we'll start to analyze the survey, survey results.
Could that be shared maybe again? I know sometimes I get stuck in spam, which is hard because the school can't control that necessarily either. But do you think we, there's a way to get more?
There's been various methods, like in the newsletters, there's been various ways of putting in the knowledge. But I think the Sex Ed, that's kind of a Sex Ed Advisory Board space to, to have the determination to feel if they're taking enough feedback or not.
Just to verify, would the students give us a survey or just parents?
Just parents.
Just, yes, just parents. So I'm worried to base our decisions, will we, um, you guys have parents that not saying parents go to, not going to the bathroom? Uh, but on something us as a, as a standard, maybe, um, I, we feel like, um, I would have a very hard time with making a curriculum, I'll be honest, that does not generate any, as a topic of conversation. And I, we know the statistics of how dangerous it is not to cover these issues. Um, and I feel that it, it would really be not aligning with the work that we're doing. Um, I mean, again, I'm, I'm one of, I'm a realize that.
At the beginning of the conversation, um, one thing before I say, I say, um, we still have opt-out. So we've had opt-out in this space for a very, very long time. And we've had this curriculum for decades and opt-out has always been, and it can be specific opt-out, right? So I don't, we don't want families to feel that they are locked into any one thing. With many things that we have in the district, there's opt-outs and there's structures and a place to support those opt-outs. So they're not called, uh, we'll say. So always remember that there's always the opt-out as an option.
I think to me, there's so much to me is your structure to have families decide to opt out as opposed to opting in, right? You can't opt in to something that doesn't exist, that is not supported by your curriculum. And so that would be, I need you to report back at a few hours.
And, um, so my, my thoughts are very similar to what these is that I think a lot of our, the work that we've been doing with our mission and our vision and our policies, um, are aligned to having gender identity as part of the conversation in the district. Again, I don't even know at what ages best for what kind of conversation. Um, there's experts in that space that I like to rely on, which is board member. But in general, I think gender identity would be a important component to any of curriculum that we have. I think gender identity would be a important component to any health curriculum that we have. And knowing, with a lot of our awareness work that we have, and a lot of our mental health structures that the district needs to have supports for all students in the district, you know, identity can be one of those conversations. And so giving some tools for our educators to help the students and families go through this process, but also keeping them informed if that's not what they want for their students. I think there's great value in that ability, but at least they know. Digging into what you don't know is better than digging out what you do know. So that was kind of my feeling. And again, just to start of a conversation at the board level, I'm sure other board members would like to have their voice heard also. But we are having some meetings, and we're doing some work that I thought would be helpful to start this at the board level, getting some feedback, what we were thinking in this space. The other component is students on the Sex Ed Advisory Board, and then what kind of authority, by that I mean, will they have the ability to vote, be a voting member, or just a feedback member as a consulting role? So just to help clarify, state law is very specific on the number and kinds of people that you have to have on the board at minimum. This student area has been, was kind of left out of the conversation with the laws and things. And so, school districts do different things and in different ways. And so, we are currently looking at creating some bylaws that help that Sex Ed Advisory Board run to certain step within the guidelines of what the state law says. Again, the state law has given pretty strong bumpers, but it's more how do you operate within that space is what these guidelines are. And there's lots of models out there, many, many school districts. They've captured several, but they thought it would be best to look at what that could look like. And so one of the conversations that has been coming up several times is, should we have students on the Sex Ed Advisory Board? And if we do have students, what would that, what would their voice be? Would it just be a consulting role, or would they have a vote? Now, the other question that's come up was how many, right? But I think that's kind of something that the Sex Ed Advisory Board, I think, can kind of work through and kind of come up with, see what they feel is the better bit. Again, much like Katie said, now, this group is much higher on the list of things to be working on, right? There's a lot of attention to this space right now. Historically, over the years, it's been usually the complete opposite. It's very challenging to get anyone on. But nonetheless, I think it's important that the group makes up these parameters and try to codify this to help us work, help this group as they can. So I'm looking for some feedback on, should students be on the Sex Ed Advisory Board? And if so, what kind of thought on, what kind of authority would make that?
How many are on right now?
There are three. And also, just to clarify, it's almost always a high school, an upper class high school. So the idea in general was post-Sex Ed conversation, their health, which is often freshman year, maybe sophomore year space. So it's usually a junior, senior. Not only that, but just logistic wise, it's hard for students, even below junior and senior to just get there and have that conversation.
And they apply, is that correct? Do they apply for it? And do they say we would like this many, or does it kind of just depend on how many apply?
We haven't, this is all new space. So we appoint all of the other Sex Ed Advisory Board members at this point as an appointment process, and we do that through application. The student representative often has been a high school health teacher, finds someone who's interested in this space and asks if they would like to get involved. But again, that's what the bylaws group is working on right now, is kind of codifying and defined assessment.
Could you remind me, I feel like the last time, or you had maybe two times ago, that the Sex Ed Advisory Board representatives, they asked for more slots. Is, was, am I remembering the right group of that? Okay. And so, currently, how many people? I remember we kind of gave a few more as to say, like, however many needed, well, it keeps me at a reasonable number. Do you remember how many that was?
Sixteen.
Okay.
I think it was sixteen, and that does not include students.
Right. Okay, so that's what I was going to ask. The student slots are separate from the initial sixteen?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I did help clarify that a little for the public. So there's clergy, there's health, there's parents, administrator, those in the health department. I'm missing any groups.
Of course, parents, teachers.
I think the unique is the health, some are the healthful, health profession. And it is not, so we've had people like University of Texas, who are, do health, right? That's their PhDs in health on it. So it doesn't necessarily have to be an M.D., licensed M.D., or a licensed, or it's health expert kind of a thing.
I don't know. To me, if we ask students to be on a committee and we do not give them a vote, it feels a bit critical. And so, or maybe not critical, but, but taking away, right, from the value of feedback that they offer. And I feel like they have a space to vote as much as anybody else. And that's why, to me, it was as a kind of all or nothing. If we welcome these voices in this, I feel like it kind of comes with a vote. And I know the law is not clear on whether we should have students. And so, I think, I think they go together. And I, I cannot imagine, well, I mean, I see the value of just feedback, but I think it stands a loud passage if we take away the number of people to vote.
Yeah, I think if we have students on there, that they want to vote, and they have that opportunity to do that. And I think, like you said, the state mandates what the committee needs to look like as far as the other adults, right? Because they're a diverse group of people. And so I think also, you know, just, I'm curious whether they open it up again, if there's more, you know? Would that change? Would more students want to apply or not leave if they knew they had a vote? Or maybe some of the paths are like, eh, you know, it won't really matter, I mean, whether they do it or not, but I imagine that that could be part of it. So I think maybe that's a piece to, and I'm sure they have lots of time, I don't know, they're dictating what they do, but that might compare to the conversations already. Okay, if they are going to vote, what's our process, and how many students are kept in?
I think my thoughts are that I agree. I think by adding students on that group, we're empowering them by giving them voice. And I think we, you know, continue to look at ways to empower our students, and this is one way to do that. And I think that there's a lot of people who want that.
I have to do, I think, parliament's a key part of what it is, and I think giving opportunities for students to be empowered, and having some control of areas that they live, that there's great value in that. By giving them not just a voice, but actually the ability to impact is a great value. I think we do that across the whole district in general. That's been kind of a philosophy of ours, is to keep students engaged and listen to them as much as we can. And I think that this is just another example of another opportunity where that needs to be, yeah, and there are kind of clarified, just because of the common tendencies in this space, but in general, try to get as many students feedback as we can on these areas. Does anyone have anything else that we might need to carry back to the Sex Ed Advisory Board? Is there a lot of these different things? Also note that we've, the committee, the group has agreed to increase the number of meetings over this next several months, periods of time, to help come to some conclusion on some of these pieces, so we can get it wrapped up. So we'll be able to go back to our former schedule, which is pretty much every other month or so. But they all felt it was important to get some of these things determined, so they were going to formulate their recommendations to the board to have that conversation. They would back up more conversations on that, but again, the idea here was just to start our conversation. Since other people in the community have had the voice surveys, and other things, it's a ten, I'll be fair.
Please pass on our thanks to them too, if anyone can be really daunting, and lots of research and conversation, and thanks for giving me them. Thank you.
The last item on my report is a continued look at our board policies. So we'll note that we decided that we were not going to look at a new set of policies this evening. So we're really following up on those that are still pending. I am still waiting for Terrence's approval on our changes to policy 5103. Remember, that's our policy on search, search and seizure, so we won't be discussing that this evening. You do have in your board packet a set of board policies that are meant for review. So what I did with these policies is I highlighted, or I put our proposed changes to the policy in red, and I reviewed them with our attorney, Ray Davis, and Ray made suggested changes, and Ray's changes are in blue. So he will add the first policy, which is 4102, anti-harassment. We wanted to add sort of that introductory statement into that policy. And the language that we had looked at said that the Montplona Public Schools is committed to providing all personnel with a safe and supportive working environment in which all members of the school can be treated with respect. Ray's suggestion is that we change that to say the Montplona Public Schools is committed to providing all personnel with a safe and inclusive working environment.
That make sense? I can see how some of the other wording was in the wording, and might make it hard for interpretation. I like the wording, too.
I think finding that in our policy is systematic, or at least renewable, is very nice.
Does anyone have any concerns with that change? The second part of the policy that we asked to change was under 3D, just to add social media and rate the science section. So next, under section for review is policy 4103. And that, again, is the whistleblowers protection policy. That's another policy where we discussed sort of that introductory paragraph. Ray liked the first sentence. He felt as though the second and third sentences were redundant based on what's already there. I'm sorry, the second sentence really, he said, was redundant. The third sentence, where it addresses parents, volunteers, contractors, and concerned citizens, he felt like that was an inappropriate sentence to include in this section that's focused on district employment. So his suggestion was that we just put, we add the first sentence as written, and then go on to the policy that they approved. Is that, do there any questions or concerns?
I think there's a lot of sense. It's a nice clarity. It doesn't make sense.
Okay.
Like a true word.
That's what you can tell. Right, right, there you go.
What you're saying.
Yeah. Then we move on to policy 4105. That is our policy for workplace accommodations for employees under state federal law. And you can see, again, you know, we have the introductory paragraph where we're committed to providing all personnel with a safe and supportive working environment. Ray thought that we should add that we're committed to providing all disabled personnel with a safe and inclusive environment, allow them for reasonable accommodations. And then move into the policy there as we're talking.
This is maybe really nuanced, but it, should it be, say, all personnel? At least, I'm trying to be, what's the current language? Is there any version to say it that way?
I mean, I can see some, I can feel like people first.
Sure.
Language is important, so.
So we could change that states committed to providing all personnel with a disability with a safe and inclusive working environment.
I like that, you touched on that.
Any other team? Yeah, I think you're right. Any other comments on 4105? Okay, and then I'll keep scrolling down. To 4210, 4210 is the drug alcohol-free workplace and tobacco product restrictions. And we did, if you'll recall, at our board meeting where we discussed these policies, we talked about how we want to have some sort of sentence that would allow for use of a tobacco product on district premises that signify the importance to indigenous practices. So we went back for a little bit and landed with number five C. And this is superintendent, or does it mean make grants an exception to this policy for tobacco use in instruction or other exceptional circumstances, including as part of an indigenous practice or lawfully recognized religious, spiritual, or cultural ceremony or practice in compliance with state or federal law? And this is very similar to our current policies, or our previous policies from Miola. Miola policy basically said that an employee could be in possession of tobacco with the explicit permission of a superintendent. So really, what this has done is just continued that line of thought, but added in a reason why, which would be the indigenous practices or lawfully recognized.
I like that clarity. That helps the staff know better when to ask, what the parameters are, gives the superintendent better, right, so that they can make that decision.
So if there aren't any other questions, I guess we can, under new business, we can determine we can approve these four policies with those changes. They are not currently listed on our section for approval. But we could add those, but how is it, if the board wanted to do so?
I'd be okay with all of them, besides 4210, because I would definitely society on the tobacco usage. And I know she hasn't been able to be here for the conversation of the original last five and this current meeting. And so that's the number one I would go back, but I would be okay moving forward. The other.
I don't know that we'd have to do that. I mean, I guess to keep it clean, if you will, we could just wait and approve all four of these policies in two weeks. There's nothing that's stopping us from doing that, that way we'll make sure that all board members have the opportunity to review all four of them. We can just move forward with the ones listed on our new business this evening. That's okay. Okay. Yep, and then the last item under our discussion is just a quick discussion regarding the Michigan Association of School Board Conference. So many board members are attending that conference towards the end of this week. There is a delegate assembly on Thursday night, and I believe Amy will be there, Tim, oh, I'm sorry, Amy, we mean, and Nathan will be there. And we did learn this week that we will be able to participate in the assembly, but we will not have a vote, which I think is, you all kind of understand, and is fine. And then we'll make sure we correct that. And that's all that I'm working on this evening.
Thank you, gentlemen. We have received four scores since the last board meeting from Jessica Law, Deanie Moonow, Sam Zantacard, Zoe Cressa, and Allison Foster. This moves us to our citizens who cost to the board on any agenda or non-agenda item. The Montplona Public School Board of Vacation Meeting is a meeting in the public, it's not a meeting of the public. Any member of the public may make comments at the appropriate time, which is right on any agenda or non-agenda item. The public comments will be limited to three minutes each. Speaking will be timed, but we also encourage you to mind your participation. We have three people tonight. The first one is Samantha Fish.
The name is Samantha Dash. I'm a parent in this district. This is my daughter. She's nine. She attends fourth grade in this district, and since the beginning of this school year, she and her class of principals to unsafe behaviors in the classroom. They witnessed shouting, items being thrown, destruction of school property, and physical restraint of the student vice staff. Until recently, none of the students were being evacuated from their classroom on a yearly basis. She protected them. Thank goodness, their teacher stepped up when she was allowed to and removed them from their own physical school. However, we were never going to talk about these issues by the school. In fact, our child witnessed all of this and became so desensitized, she stopped talking about it at home. And it's, it's, and said that she doesn't like school anymore. She began displaying signs of anxiety. We've done more than our due diligence to work with building administration, Mrs. Rutter. We can find no possible law or policy prohibiting staff from sharing a brief incentive. We can find no possible law or policy prohibiting staff from sharing a brief incident report. When a safety issue occurs in the classroom, yes, staff across multiple buildings express, here, talking to families through the administration backlash. Why? How can so many teachers be scared of admin? How can the messaging be to have only discourage staff from having a professional level of transparency with parents? It feels like the goal is to prevent information from reaching parents so that complaints are low, and so that buildings experience less parent calls and emails. The solution posed to us is to change our daughter's classroom to disrupt her school year. This is a shocking and negligent take on the situation. Another student has attacked and thrown things at classmates with little to no provocation, repeatedly. Yet the student handbook was not consistently followed despite the code of conduct having a clear outline of aggressive discipline. This isn't unique, this is happening in multiple classrooms at varying levels of intensity. Our own teachers have pulled their children from our schools, is that not a strong enough message? I'm under no impression this board will respond to me or take action, and here's a first step in calling other parents to action. We won't go away with placating statements and emails that fail to address our questions. Transparency keeps our kids safe and prevents liability. Again, she's nine, this is what her school day looks like.
Thank you. Thank you, Samantha. Next, we have Kevin.
Good evening. Uh, but he's got a, like, long member of his community, uh, while they're on night. I did it, uh, in OCC, at CNU, I've spent over twenty years in our community as a law enforcement officer. Very lovely, in fact, I had the opportunity to be a civil liaison officer about fifteen years ago, and developed friendships and relationships with many of the, uh, teachers and administrators in, uh, in whole fire district and, uh, other districts in the county, and that I may take in this day. But the reason I'm here is because I'm a father, and what my wife just spoke about. But before I get into my disappointment, I first want to say I have very much support of our schools. I have paid for your staff and students, and overall, I'm very happy with the, the teaching staff that my children have had. But that's what brings me here, from the dad first, and because my kids are at school in your district, and, uh, we've been trying to address problems, uh, and it's not being solved. Um, we've, this is, and our last is Shepard, so I'm here to ask the board for your help, and to ask that you look into this, and look at all where it is, as soon as you are, because the superintendent and the principal told us that they have consulted your legal counsel, with, uh, multiple, we've started getting, in the future, we've got the principal, both in person, through, uh, Facebook, essentially, uh, through email. Tried to work our way up to the, the statement, we're not really, uh, any results. We've had several questions that are unanswered, that respond to, if they say this, such as federal and state law have been asked from sharing that information with you, and asking to be a team member, but they, they ignore the questions, they don't answer them. Some of the questions couldn't be asked, and what our protocol is for when students are throwing things and damaging property in classrooms. And I've asked for clarification, uh, your administration has said FERPA, as prohibiting them from notifying us about, uh, fashion safety incidents and fashion evacuation. Initial conversations with your school admin, they liked the word evacuation, they accident the room and stuff, but I, I, they have warmed up to it and used that term in correspondence with us eventually. But I, I feel like they're hiding behind the state sayings of state and federal law, and a lot of us, and I've multiple times asked for clarification, uh, getting, if you know, can you cite the specific statutes? I'm well versed in reading laws, not necessarily school laws. Kind of law enforcement, that's administrative law enforcement, I testified in state private court multiple times. Part of my job as an administrator was interpreting case law and reading laws. I can do that, but she's not giving me a guide, it's purpose of a large document. And every time I ask, nobody is being responsive, I just choose not to address that part of the, of our correspondence. I tried giving the tools to remedy this, I gave recommendations. As you may or may not know, the Department, the United States Department of Education has a FERPA help desk, it's actually the, uh, school, student privacy help desk, where they can answer quite many questions regarding FERPA, I did reach out to them. It... Sorry, does that make sense? Yes, sir. Uh, essentially, uh, according to the Department of Education, the paid information requesting is not prohibited by FERPA, I shared that part of one of those with your superintendent. And again, I'm just here to see how, for my, my kids, and I hope that as well, doesn't listen, she can share more with you, if you'd like, I've had to, uh, share part of one of these.
Thank you, Jen. Next, we have Lauren Frost.
Hi, um, to start off with a middle school report, I, I love the inclusion of different things. I remember not exactly that, but something similar from my middle school. And honestly, I think it had to be so good with some communication, um, helped with my certain vulnerabilities, um, sympathy, and, um, those things, and I'm just happy to see the fashion for everything. With free camp, uh, one thing that they mentioned is about how many registered people are in it, and there's two showers. When I was there, there was like so many people, barely any showers, so that's actually a ratio, and people appreciate that. For the Sex Ed Board, I would say that, um, student members should have a vote, you know? Especially, and then for the membership, like the amount, I think that there's such a variety of people on it, that students are still a ratio, it would make no sense to not have a vote. And then I think that one aspect, I mean, gender identity in Sex Ed is just the language that's inclusive, like a person from China that's against women, and things such as that, and kind of elaborating on the oxygen aspect, is having gender identity, um, that part of health education being separate from the more liberal Sex Ed. Just so that, um, parents who are mostly of a gender, and their children can still learn about the other children's rights or something.
Thank you, Lauren. This concludes our citizens' reports, to the board. Please, I want to, uh, consent to the general, seeing approval, and there's a motion to approve the minutes of the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, five minutes of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Thanks, everybody. We have a few items on review business, starting with you, Haye.
Yes, good evening, we are excited to welcome Andrew Frisch as a new middle school math teacher. He'll be, um, teaching seventh grade for us, starting in pride two. Andrew is a Mount Pleasant graduate, he's got twenty-six years of experience joining us from Farwell. I believe he was a graduate of Mount Pleasant in nineteen eighty-five, I might be a little off, but, um, he, uh, is welcome, he's excited to come back to our community.
Is there a motion to, um, accept the new hire, Andrew Frisch?
So moved. Second. On paper? Aye.
Can you oppose? Thank you for joining our district, always great to have you on. Next, we have, uh, a donation.
Your board met this evening, we have an acknowledgement regarding a donation from Central Motorsports. The donation is a set of service manuals, the WAP, the Service Library, and the GI Tech Small Engines Program. The estimated value of the manuals is quite large, it's twenty-three thousand dollars. And the, um, I was committed to acknowledge and thank Central Motorsports for their generous donation.
Is there a motion to accept a donation from Central Motorsports?
So moved. Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Thank you for the generous gift, I'm sure it's been a great benefit.
Amy, good for coming. I'd like to thank Central Motorsports, this is not the first time that they've given us a lot in this area. We really appreciate the community's support that they've done for our work, and they, Small Engines, and GI Tech. This is significant donations, so, thank you for all the community's support.
We have the approval of five policies.
Oh, first, you got that?
Oh, no, the McGuire Fifth Grade Camp, I knew it. Um, so the presentation we saw, um, is there a motion to approve the Fifth Grade Camp? And I think it's Camp People, Eagle?
Eagle Village.
Eagle Village, I'm sorry.
I'm sure, I've known our district, I'm sure they would do everything to help the kid go, right?
Absolutely.
That was just my biggest concern, just, you know, with financial burden that kid would have behind, so... Knowing our district, I was pretty sure, you know, they would joke that they could, but just to clarify.
I think, I think it's important to note that, so that this does mean that likely future McGuire will go to different camps this year, um, but both buildings will work with outside donations, with their PTOs, um, to make sure that every student that should be able to go, is able to go based on finances, so, for sure.
And for having accepted the last year in the district, the homes that went home were really well done. Parents could support, and also do consultation, be a dentist, um, there's a lot of avenues so that that participation could happen without necessarily the seatbelt and having to ask the other person. And so, if, I thought at least four papers I had in here.
Do we need, um, a motion, a second?
Is there a motion to accept the Fifth Grade Camp?
Second. Aye.
Can you oppose? Everybody? And then we have to approve five policies.
So you may go through just quickly again what the changes to the policies are, just, or, okay. Just, just so we're on the same page. Uh, policy forty-one oh four, that was the policy where we wanted to add clarification that the reference to the president and vice president are of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education. So there's a couple of spots in that policy where that clarification exists under military league, um, which is policy forty-one oh seven. Uh, the question was, who is the employment, employment compliance officer? So we had identified the superintendent, or the assistant superintendent for Human Resources as the employment compliance officer. Under policy forty-one oh nine, uh, we wanted to increase the amount of time given to nursing mothers, um, to find a, a spot other than a bathroom, um, free from intrusion, from one year to two years. Uh, and policy forty-one, I'm sorry, forty-two oh one, regarding employee ethics and standards, again, that was, uh, one of the introductory paragraphs, and Truun did approve that paragraph as written. And then, um, finally, policy forty-two oh five, um, under section A, regarding advertising and posting, we have the ethic language, all postings are encouraged to include the following language, which is our Indigenous land acknowledgement statement. Um, and that, those policies were all approved with our, as by Truun, for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve policies forty-one oh four, forty-one oh seven, forty-one oh nine, forty-two oh one, and forty-two oh five?
So moved. Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Let's move on to our proof session, is there a vote called to go into proof session? Is there a motion to go into proof session for a superintendent evaluation?
So moved.
Can you ban this?
Second.
Second, first, oh, sorry, second. Vote, please.
Timonikar, yes.
You can go with this.
Can you read, yes?
Can you ban this? Thank you. Okay, and so at this point, we go into proof session, which means that, um, uh, we ask the public if you want to leave in.